Uh, just to give you some instructions while she gets back in place. I would like folks to know that they can use the raised hand feature. We have a monitor in front of the council here and we will try to use that to call on people in order that we recognize them. And those people on the telephone, I believe it's star six to raise a hand? Star nine to raise a hand, star six to unmute. Uh, those folks that will be coming up to the podium this evening and addressing us online, I'll be asking you to state your name for the verbal or the oral record. And we would appreciate your residence or residence address. Okay, Gina, are you in a position to execute roll call, please?
I am. Mayor Ignacio.
Here.
Vice Mayor Barbara Berkey.
Here.
Councilmember Anna Dobbins. I didn't get audio on that.
Here.
Thank you. Uh, councilmember Jim Kugel.
I'm also here.
Councilmember Richard Wasserman.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And also in attendance?
And also in attendance, um, city attorney Ginny. Sorry, I missed my place here.
There she is.
Ginny Chandler. We also have, um, uh, Scott Perkins, our city planner and myself, Gina Juvess, uh, deputy city clerk.
And thank you Gina and our illustrious city manager, Paul Anderson. Okay, uh, councilmember Dobbins, I turn the, uh, mic over to you.
Oh, um, I came, I was thinking of other readings, but I heard a quote from Neil deGrasse Tyson. The other day which struck me as wonderful. He says that as the depth of our knowledge increases, also does the perimeter of our ignorance.
Good job. Uh, folks, you've had an opportunity on the council here to see the agenda and, um, read it ahead of time. I would entertain a motion to adopt agenda and then we can discuss it before we go to a vote.
So moved.
Thank you. Thank you for the movement, councilmember Wasserman and the second vice mayor Berkey. Is there any, uh, changes, uh, from the council or additions from staff to the agenda as it's presented?
Uh, there was a request from Mr. Stemler of Recology to move his item up because he has a meeting to get to at seven. So he was requesting that we move that item to the beginning of the agenda.
Mr. Stemler's here?
He's on the, uh, Zoom.
Okay. And is there a council member that I'd like to adopt that change?
I would so move that we adopt that change of the earlier, uh, item.
Uh, so to find a place. Why don't we move it to? Can we do presentation, uh, C? Does that work for you? Oh, I'm sorry. Uh. You want to do it after measure O, measure P? That would be eight C. Eight C. Does that work for the motion maker?
Yes, it does.
And I need a second on that motion. If anybody would like a second?
A second.
Uh, the motion's made by count, uh, councilmember Kugel, second by councilmember Wasserman. Is there any questions on the motions? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed?
Yeah.
Okay, uh, roll call vote Gina?
Uh, Mayor Ignacio.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Berkey.
No.
Councilmember Dobbins.
Yes. Yes.
Councilmember Kugel.
Yes.
Councilmember Wasserman.
Yes.
Um, the vote passes.
Four to one.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, uh, that item will now be, uh, moved up and that was, I believe, ten B is in boy will now become eight C is in Charles. And that's still, that was an altercation to the previous motion. Does the original motion maker for the agenda, approval of the agenda stay with that motion? Richie?
Yes.
And the second Barbara?
Yes.
Okay, is there any questions on the motion? Not hearing any. I'd like a roll call vote, please Gina.
Uh, excuse me, uh, Mayor Hignacio. Vice Mayor Berkey.
Yes.
Councilmember Wasserman.
Yes.
Councilmember Kugel.
Yes.
Councilmember Dobbins.
Yes.
Did I get asked? Did I vote already?
You were asked, but you didn't say anything.
Oh, I'm sorry. Uh, new information, uh, I'd like to request that, uh, we take a repoll as I would like to move this to item eight A and shift the other two down. Is there any objection to that? And there's a logistical reason for that.
No objection.
No objections, no objections heard. Alright, so I'm gonna ask for a re- a re-tally of that vote. We're gonna move, uh, ten B to the new eight A. And major.
Mayor Ignacio.
Uh, that will be a yes.
Vice Mayor Berkey.
Yes.
Councilmember Dobbins.
Yes.
Councilmember Kugel.
Yes.
Councilmember Wasserman.
Yes.
Vote passes unanimously.
Thank you. Alright, uh, mayor's reports and announcements. Uh, I'd like to welcome, um, both Lieutenant JT Comer and Sheriff Matt Kendall, uh, from the Mendocino County Sheriff's Office back to our first in-person for us hybrid meeting. Uh, who would like to go first? I will defer to the sheriff at the moment. Good evening, Mr. Sheriff Kendall.
Good evening Scott. I'm actually going to ask JD to read down the stats for us. We'll get started there and then we can talk about a little higher level conversation when we get done.
Good evening JD.
Good evening, everybody. Good evening, council. Uh, before I roll into the stats a second, I just wanted to pass on and let everybody know that our Fort Bragg office is closed temporarily to the public. Uh, we have a clerical, uh, staff member out. Um, hopefully that'll be as temporary as possible, but in the meantime, all public related matters as would pertain to like CCW permits, ABC permits, restraining orders, et cetera, are being directed to our business office in Ukiah. And that's just for informational purposes. Uh, going into our stats, so over the last thirty days, uh, we've had thirty-five calls for service. Out of those thirty-five calls, we've taken three investigative reports. Uh, we have had one arrest out of those. Uh, two of those were referred to mental health. Um, kind of the high number, the, the more important calls for service out of those thirty-five, we had two nine-one-one calls, two alarm calls, one assault, uh, five calls related to civil type situations, uh, one coroner's investigation, two disturbances, uh, five calls, uh, surrounding harassment, uh, one missing person, uh, one vandalism and six calls surrounding suspicious circumstances being reported. And there you go.
Any questions for Lieutenant Comer? Thank you for your stats. You're doing a great job. Good to see you tonight.
Good to see y'all.
So I've just got a few things. Um, first off, let's, uh, let's all think about, uh, you know, we lost Warren Jacomini this month. He passed away and you know, he worked with my father for many years with Cal Fire. It was a big portion of my life growing up. Anyway, um, very good guy. Uh, and he will be missed. Um, we've got funeral services that are coming up for him over in Ukiah. I believe it's on October first. Anyway, kind of a blue moment for the Candle family because he was just like family to us. Um, couple of things that we're working on and working very hard with probation right now as well as the judiciary council, uh, regarding our pre-trial release program. There was a court decision that came down dealing with, with cash bail and, uh, various other things. And so we had to in- introduce a pre-trial release program. But I can tell you that we're building stats as we go and I think that we're doing a really good job of it. For people who don't know the background of it, pre-trial release was instituted and we've always had it for misdemeanors, but it was instituted based on a court decision that basically said, uh, you know, um, cash bail is not a good idea for several reasons and, um, some of it I actually wholeheartedly agree with. Um, and right now we have a couple of probation officers who are working with the sheriff's office. They're getting information to the judges. And the judge is getting a lot more information before they make a decision on a release on OR. And it's been very successful so far. Um, I don't believe, I, I think over the past two months, three months that we've had it in place, we've only had a couple of people who re-offended while they were out on, on OR. Um, and so that is a very, very small number compared to, uh, to what we've had in the past with the cash bail system. We were able to, you know, kind of take that deeper dive into our, um, our dual response teams. And I just got done throwing together some really preliminary stats and it looks like we have reduced um, transported fifty-one-fifties by almost forty percent right now because we're meeting these people halfway, um, before they go into a crisis. And that's been a really good thing for us. Um, and a lot of the folks who we were dealing with on a pretty constant basis, even though they didn't meet that criteria for danger to self, danger to others or gravely disabled, we've been able to get them some services before they go into that, uh, into that, that downward spiral. So I'm pretty happy with that. And the other thing is these folks who are working with us from behavioral health, um, they're freeing up the deputies' time. They're actually out there dealing with these things so that we don't have deputies, um, you know, on behavioral health calls for hours on end. And so that's been a very good thing for the sheriff's office. Um, just a couple of other things. I was up at Cal Fire this morning. I stopped in to visit with my brother and, uh, you know, was talking about fire weather and whatnot and he asked me to remind everyone, we are not out of the woods yet. October historically has been a very bad fire month for Mendocino County. Um, we had, you know, upwards of three inches of rain, um, but he reminded me two weeks of wind and some warm weather and that rain is gone. So please let's all just be as careful as what we have been leading up to this point until we get into November and then I think we can all breathe a big sigh of relief. And I will gladly take any questions that anyone has for me. Uh, I appreciate the time being able to speak this evening.
Thank you, Matt. Uh, anyone from the council have any questions for Sheriff Kendall? Anyone from the audience here tonight in the hall? And we'll take a raised hand feature from anyone, uh, joining us on Zoom. Sheriff, again, if you can just wait for about thirty seconds before we go, but, uh, I want to thank you and Lieutenant Comer for being here with us every month. Uh, and we appreciate your patience as we go through some of our technical issues. Stay safe out there.
Thank you.
How about, uh, we move to section five, council reports. Are there any city-related meetings or council committee or commission reports? I will turn it over to Vice Mayor Berkey.
Um, good evening, everyone. I attended quite a few events this month, the first being the League of California Cities Convention in Long Beach that I attended with councilmember Wasserman. Um, we both went to a lot of different workshops and they included things like, um, equity, um, homelessness, supporting local small businesses, creating youth-friendly cities, um, and advancing empowerment in a disadvantaged community. So, uh, a lot of great information that we wouldn't have otherwise received. It was well worth the time and effort of going. I also attended the Mendocino County Economic Summit last week, uh, which had a lot of different discussions about housing, broadband, tourism, sustainable tourism, which is a big deal these days, park planning, um, and, uh, bolstering our fishing industry on the coast, the blue economy. So I have a lot of information there to share with the city manager and my council members. Um, we also had a Harbor Fest debriefing meeting, which was, um, a really good way to talk about what went right and what went wrong. And, um, to work on next year as being a bigger and better event than ever. And that's all I have.
Great. Um, during your, uh, your meeting at the league, did you, you mentioned something to me right before the, uh, session here? Did you want to touch on that? I think it'd be interesting.
Yeah, there was some.
Just as impromptu, we, we can table it for later, but.
No, no, I'm happy to share that there was some discussion about how to motivate more people to be council members. And here in Point Arena, that's an ongoing discussion. And, um, one point that was brought up was that, um, count, being a council member, you, you don't really make very much money. I mean, we take home sixty-five dollars a month and that, that might be a deterrent to certain people because maybe they're low income and they can't afford to be a council member. Um, they're busy earning a living, uh, trying to put food on the table. And maybe if there was more money offered to council members, there might be more incentive to other types of people besides us gray hairs like me to, um, be a council member.
That's a good point. Um, maybe, uh, I, I would like to encourage the city manager to be open. Well, I know you're open to, uh, maybe this discussion topic at a future agenda. Um, and, uh, we can look forward to visiting that and give the public an opportunity to weigh in at that time. Thank you for that.
That would be great. You're welcome.
Any other, uh, council reports? Not seeing any. We'll move on to section six, privilege of the floor. This is the time for members of the public who wish to be heard on matters that do not appear on the agenda. The council's policy is to limit each speaker to three minutes pursuant to the Brown Act. The city council cannot act on items that are brought up during the, um, privilege of the floor period. Now, since this is our first hybrid meeting back, uh, I'm going to elect today to give our Zoom viewers the opportunity to use the raise hand feature for those on computers or tablets and use the, uh, I think it's star nine on the phone to use the raise hand feature if they'd like to be heard for privilege of the floor this evening. And I'm just continuing to talk and hopefully, uh, vamping enough that people will, uh, be able to be recognized for that. I do see Jennifer Smallwood. Uh, can you unmute your mic and confirm it to you for us? And, uh, we'd like to talk to you.
Uh, yeah, this is Jennifer Smallwood.
Hi Jennifer.
And I have three things. One, uh, block party. I just wanted to, uh, thank you to, uh, the DJs, Myra and her partner. Uh, we had a great turnout. Uh, people brought food and we used the grills and it'd be really cool if we could get some grills, permanent grills at the park. That was very much a highlight. Um, Oz Farm gave vegetables to be shared and we grilled them and shared with each other. There were vendors, the dentists from Point Arena gave us toothbrushes to hand out. Ashley Network was there. Charter School brought jump ropes and we have some very fancy jumping rope people in Point Arena. We could win stuff. We should go be in a contest or something. Uh, the library, uh, people turned out. There were free books, kids made badges. There was donut eating, Cal Fire judged the snickerdoodle and savory monkey bread cook-off. And there was guitars and accordion music. It was great fun. That's one. Two, five, uh, let's see, Port Road sidewalk. A while ago was brought up that there was interest in putting a sidewalk on the, whatever side that is, the side where there isn't the sidewalk. Um, and I've looked at the topography map of the area. And if you look at the topography map of the area, you will see that Port Road is the lowest residential area in the surrounding watershed. The last rain we had, which was plus or minus three inches, the side of the street that already has a sidewalk was flooding out into the street in several places and mostly along the flatter part of the street. The side where there is no sidewalk or mostly no sidewalk, um, did not have any runoff into the street at all. Uh, there was no, no water buildup. The drains on Iverson that collect the water from Port Road were full to overflowing. Uh, so I would suggest that the idea of installing any more non-porous surfaces in the flat part of this watershed, um, that the entire drainage for the watershed needs to be considered. And that includes the effect that climate change is having on the higher amounts of rain that are falling at one time and how those amounts of rain impact, uh, the city's infrastructure. I believe that putting another sidewalk on Port Road at this time with no other changes in the infrastructure would create a flooded street. That's two. And three, Fire Safe Point Arena, uh, the regular meeting, the first Wednesday of each month is, uh, gonna be October fifth and the topic will be, uh, part two of our evacuation information. The November meeting, uh, we'll meet at the library and then weather permitting, we're gonna walk around town with a person that knows about home hardening and how to set up your living space to have it more likely survive a fire. Uh, we are looking, researching grants to develop an emergency response map for Point Arena and the surrounding area. The first place that I'm looking for money is from Mendocino, Fire Safe Mendocino, the county organization. And when Emily gets back on board, uh, hopefully we'll be able to, to start that. That's gonna be, um, kind of a big deal because we don't really have anything like that. We have hubs and routes, but that's for us is kind of, um, doesn't really do much for us in terms of emergency response. So, uh, that's where Fire Safe Point Arena is right now and that's it.
Jennifer, I got a question. That was awesome. I mean, under three minutes, it was perfect. Fire Safe Point Arena, you mentioned it, but I didn't write it down. When is the next meeting?
October fifth. It's the first Wednesday of every month. It's in the library at four forty-five for about an hour.
Okay, thank you. And can you hold on the line for a sec? Paul? Since this benefits Point Arena, is there, do you, would you see any objection if Jennifer, um, was willing that we could ask for her report on Fire Safe Point Arena under the council reports? Jennifer, what did you think of that idea? I mean, it's, that's completely voluntary and if you're available, great. If not, we can just keep moving on. But in the future, would you be willing to give your report under other council reports?
Uh, sure. I mean, I mean, I mean, I have something to say every time, but if I don't, I'll just say that or.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah.
That'd be great.
I think it would, uh, absolutely be a, a good thing for the city to keep on top of what, what's going on with Fire Safe Point Arena.
So that's one council member's desire. Is there any, uh, question or concern from the rest of the dais? I'm getting thumbs up from the right, thumbs up from the left. Awesome. Thanks Jennifer. We'll try to make that work out in future meetings. Uh, any other hand raising features recognized up there? Can you call, is this the whole list right now? Okay, how about anybody from the, uh, this is for, uh, privilege of the floor. Anyone want to take the podium tonight? Alright, do you do? Yeah, absolutely. Why don't you come up to the podium, pull the mic to you, state your name and your address?
Okay, my name's Joya and I'm, I live on Eureka Hill Road.
Okay, thanks. Good evening.
And, um, um, as this city council group of people recognizes the vital importance of the, uh, the Point Arena wharf to our city's economy, so have councils in the past. And, um, a dear friend of all of ours, Annie Leroy, has passed away, who was instrumental along with Leslie Dahlhoff in, in, um, reorganizing the road to the wharf and including a bike path. And, uh, a group of us, um, who I'm representing would like to dedicate the bicycle path to Annie Leroy. And I need to figure out how to present a proposal and be on the agenda for the next meeting.
I would encourage you to contact City Hall. Uh, phone number, I can give it to you off, off the side here if you want, but it's seven oh seven eight eight two.
You mean right here?
Two one two two.
Oh, yeah.
Or you can drop in and, uh, um, uh, have an appointment with the city manager and discuss your proposal. And I'd be happy to see that on a future agenda item. Does that work for you?
Do you suppose it could be on the next month's agenda?
I'm gonna leave that between you and the city manager. He manages the agenda and presents it to us next month.
Great. It's good to understand all of this. Okay, thank you. I don't think I'm gonna stay.
That's okay.
But thank you and I will come talk to the city manager.
I think a letter would also suffice to, so writing a letter to the city council or to the city manager.
A letter of proposal.
That'd be great too, yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. It would only include a sign of memorial.
It's, uh.
I thought will be in the letter.
That would be great. And an illustration if you're gonna provide a letter, just so we can see what you're intending.
Sure, yeah. Need design approval, sign approval. Okay.
That, that'd move it along nicely.
Thank you.
Thank you, Joya.
Thank you, Joya.
Thank you, Joya.
Anyone else? Not seeing any. We're gonna move on. Uh, we're coming to section eight. Section eight, presentations, uh.
Section seven.
Oh, you're right. Thank you for keeping me on track there, Barbara. Uh, con- section seven, consent calendar. Uh, items listed under this category are considered to be routine by the city and are typically enacted by one motion. Uh, is there any council member that would like to pull one of the three that are listed under the consent calendar, A, B, or C? If not, I would entertain a motion to adopt the, uh, consent calendar as presented.
So moved.
Vice Mayor Berkey moves. Uh, councilmember Dobbins seconds. If there's no questions from the public, uh, or from the hall, or from, or discussion from the council, I believe we're ready to go to a vote. Gina?
Mayor Ignacio.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Berkey.
Yes.
Councilmember Dobbins.
Yes.
Councilmember Kugel.
Yes.
Councilmember Wasserman.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you Gina. Section eight, presentations, uh, we'll, we'll create, uh, call on eight A, which was formerly ten B in the packet. Uh, titled garbage and recycle collection fee increase. City manager Paul Anderson.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, this is a, uh, we're bringing this back from the last meeting as you might remember. Uh, Mr. Stemler, the general manager of Recology wasn't available. He is here tonight. And so, uh, there's no difference in what the presentation was before and what it is tonight from our perspective. Um, they are requesting a six point eight percent, uh, increase in garbage collection rates per their CPI calculation, which is allowed by our contract. And they are additionally seeking additional charges for residential customers with multiple recycling containers. And for commercial customers with multiple recycling containers, there would be fees associated with those after the first free container for recycling. And that is it. Uh, Mr. Stemler's here to answer any questions the council may have from the last meeting.
Good evening, Mr. Stemler.
Good evening.
Oh, there you are Fred. Okay.
I apologize about last meeting and, uh, appreciate the flexibility tonight.
Absolutely. We understand. Things come up. Uh, is there anything you'd like to open with Fred before, um?
Well, yeah, certainly. I, I could go through the questions that came up. I, I watched the meeting, uh, that I missed last time. So I could, I could fly through, uh, those if you'd like. I also provided a written response if that's already been reviewed.
If you wouldn't mind, go ahead and make your presentation on those responses with the questions and your response, uh, just for the general public's information, please?
Yeah, I can, I can summarize them. Um, questions one and five, both related to the CPI index that is used. So that CPI index has been consistently applied predating the acquisition of the Rado Group. It was established before then. Every year we reference the same time period. It's a Bay Area CPI index measuring July twenty-one to July twenty-two. Uh, this is a defined index. We just pulled the number and that's where the six point eight comes from. Uh, that was questions one and five. Uh, the second question was concerns expressed about damage to carts during the truck collection and whether or not customers would be charged under, uh, these new structures. There would be no charge for any containers damaged in the course of our collection. There would be no charge for any containers damaged in the course of our collection. Uh, this would be damage that we find that uh, the customers have done. We've seen like historically examples of this is where customers would drill holes inside their own containers in order to drain, which is illegal. Um, that, that puts leachate out onto the roads. Uh, it then also damages the structural integrity of it. Uh, this is very rare occurrence in which this takes place, but it's um, it's common in other contracts. So it's, it's a cleanup uh, that we wanna do account for. Um, a detail of the commercial accounts was requested by the city manager, which we've provided. Uh, it was the third question. Uh, there was a comment about cart and container replacement fees uh, that would they apply to the work that we're doing at the recycle center? They will not. And the sixth question was a comment uh, paralleling San Francisco's recycling and compost programs. And saying that because they existed there, they should exist in Point Arena. And um, the two contracts are very different than one another. So one would inaccurately assume that because something exists in San Francisco, that it would exist in Point Arena.
Like a CPI.
Um, there's a lot of things that are very different in San Francisco's contract versus Point Arenas, so. I think they were talking about products that, that would actually be uh, allowable and collected and, and that has more to do with what sort of access you have to processing facilities for recycling materials as well as composting facilities for compost and commercial food waste.
Well, thank you for that summation. That's great.
Okay.
Could I ask you a question? And I'm just the one that brought up, I believe, the uh, CPI, the Consumer Price Index comparison. I do have your contract in front of me here. It was provided by staff before the meeting. And uh, I appreciate you illustrating uh, exactly what you said and I can confirm it because I'm looking at it. Uh, with regards to the Bay Area Consumer Price Index. Do you have, Fred, any uh, contracts with other small communities similar to the size of Point Arena? That this Bay Area CPI con uh, uh, index is also um, utilized in uh, uh, rate adjustments? And uh, just to follow up to that is it just seems like you said, there's, if it's existing in one place, the CPI in the Bay Area, like you illustrate, six point eight uh, in the period that you sampled from. But that's not necessarily what the CPI in this small community is in Mendocino County. Uh, would that be something that you would be open to a discussion to in the future?
Would I be open to amending to a different index?
Well, I mean, a, a more, I mean, we're comparing a urban index to, I would call this pretty rural index.
Y- yeah. So your, your first question, yes, there are, the, the Bay Area CPI index is a extremely common index in this industry, um, especially in, in contracts as old as yours. Uh, and with the Rado Group, um, another index is a WSC index that is more waste. Um, specific that focuses on fuel. Uh, it has like a heavy, heavily weighted average to fuel because of how uh, much we rely on that. And so in that case, the WSC is larger right now with the extremely high costs of fuel and our operations. Um, and RRI is another uh, refuse rate index, which is more tailored to our industry. That is another very common one. If, if there is a desire to change index, I am open to that discussion. Um, but the, it's, it's, yeah, I guess that's it.
No, I, I thank you. You make, you make some very valid points with the price of operation and whatnot. Um, and I'll hold my answers or I'll hold my questions for anyone else that would like to address Mr. Stemler. No one else? Okay. Well, first, uh, Fred, I wanna let you know that I think the folks that you're contracting to with Solid Waste Willets are very nice people and are trying very hard to do their job. Uh, and I've noticed the care that they've been taking. Uh, but I'm also personally receiving uh, uh, concerns in the community on, on the hours that they're running. And uh, I've spoken with Jerry Ward of Solid Waste Willets and we're still working through um, uh, the noise issue uh, outside with regards to the city uh, noise ordinance. Are you familiar with this topic? Has it crossed your desk at all?
Absolutely. Uh, Jerry and I have a regular conversation, so we, we go through all of the operational concerns. I, I have seen the noise complaints around five twenty, I think was around the last one, so.
Yeah.
Um, the, the difficulty is, is just the scope of service that's uh, they're, they're covering there. But we, you know, noise complaints is very familiar to our industry. So we, we're trying to find adjustments that will work, that comply with noise ordinance and operational needs.
Well, that satisfies me at this point and knowing that you're actually uh, wa- working on it and talking with it with uh, with the provider. And again, uh, you know, Jerry's been very friendly to uh, discuss the topic with. Uh, and your local, his local operators are uh, um, doing a very good job.
Um, I, well.
That's all I have.
I, I think maybe for everyone's just status update since our last discussion with the subcommittee is we're actively replacing the Point Arena uh, pure containers for the recycling center. Those containers have arrived and we're scheduling a swap out. There should be a, a short interruption during that exchange. Just due to the length of um, distance required for traveling with those containers and pulling the old ones off. Um, but that's, that's actively underway as we uh, collectively decided we would uh, do. And then we're gonna monitor some additional changes to try and reduce the contamination and keep that facility operating. And I, I, I apologize. I, I should have introduced my, my partner here, Nikki Burke. Um, Nikki helps me out with a lot of the rate applications. So if there's any more technical uh, questions about our, our application. Um, she's, she's here as well to help out. If not, we're, you can email or call us anytime as well.
Uh, Councilmember Dobbins.
I have a question. I'm, I'm not sure if this is the right place to ask it, but.
And I'm sorry.
I'm, I may have a question about um, the extra cans. Um, I personally tried to have a extra can picked up. Uh, you know, an extra garbage can and was told it's not uh, available in our area. Uh, and it, but it's listed here as a possibility. Is that something that's in the works or not?
Is that an extra garbage can or an extra recycling can?
Extra garbage can.
Um, we, we can help you out there. Um, I, I think maybe there was a miscommunication. So if um, if you wanna contact me, um, I, I can help you out or I, I can follow up with you actually after this.
All right. Thank you, Fred.
Vice Mayor Berkey?
Oh, I just wanted to talk about the noise complaints. Um, I remember a conversation maybe a couple of years ago when we first um, were working with Recology and Solid Waste Willets about not having service starting as early as three AM. And um, currently service is ongoing at three AM in the morning. And it's not just the noise, but it's the vibration. Um, my whole house vibrates and the windows rattle and I have new windows, so it's not like they're funky old windows. Um, and uh, I'm just not very happy with the three AM service. And I noticed the trucks have turned off their backup um, beepers, which is really nice, but it's still really, really loud. And the three AM start time on my street isn't pleasing me and I'm sure it's not pleasing a lot of other people. So um, I'm just putting in my two cents that I would like to see service start later than three AM. And I don't know if that's possible, Fred, but what do you think?
I honestly, three AMs earlier than I've heard, uh, the last complaint was around five thirty, so I'll have to go back to Jerry. Um, it's illegal to disable a, a backing alarm, so that, that can't happen. That shouldn't be happening. Uh, it's, it's not my fleet operating, but they are my subcontractor. So I will follow up uh, with Jerry on both of those items.
Well, I can testify that service is ongoing at three AM because it wakes me up. And um, you know, on the days when I get up to go bake at the bakery at quarter to three, I kind of like do a little victory dance that I've gotten up before the trucks have arrived. And I've let the alarm awake, awaken me and not the truck. So anyway, um, I can attest that it's starting really, really early. And my direct neighbors, in an effort not to have the truck go to their house that early, they drag their trash can out to the highway and park it in the green belt and um.
That's like a hundred yards.
Yeah. And, and they do that to keep the truck away from their house, so they don't get woken up at three in the morning.
Oh, I live on Lake Street, on the other side of the highway. And I haven't come early enough and I live quite a ways back from the road. And I could, it, it wakes up, wakes me up because it wakes up my dog. And it's, it's really early. It's three thirty, thirty. Yeah.
I'll confess that, you know, I've, I've heard it at other hours that much earlier than three, because I'm before both of you on the collection, but not lately. And um, I did hear the recent five thirty-one. I don't know if that was isolated. Doesn't sound like it. It sounds, but uh, you know, I, 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 I want my trash picked up and I'm worried about traffic. If these guys have to change their routes to business hours during the day. That's just me. I'm only one council member. I live right, you guys know where I live. I live right on the highway there. But the school buses in the morning need to get to school. And these trash trucks have to come in and out of the lane. So, you know, the more traffic that we're asking them to operate in, it could cause some other nuisance problems. Um, oh no, I'm gonna call on you. Um, and again, this is just one council member and so I'm, I'm tolerating these noises right now because uh, I'd like to see it done and out of the way. Uh, if there was a better solution, possibly later in the day, I'm not sure. Um, I'm just addressing it from my personal uh, perspective on, on the safety of getting traffic through early in the morning. Um, so that's my two cents and I would like to turn it back over to Vice Mayor Berkey.
Um, well, I hear what you're saying, Mayor Ignacio, but I think there's a big difference between three thirty and five thirty. And I would be willing to compromise on five thirty pickup. I mean, there's no school buses out at five thirty.
They start at five thirty. I'm, I'm sorry. They start at five thirty. Who does? School buses. They do?
She lives by the school bus.
Do they have kids on the bus at five thirty?
They start warming the buses up.
Okay.
Five, five thirty.
All right. Well, anything other than three thirty would please me because three, three thirty is too freaking early.
I would like to chime in again, if you mind. Um, that uh, it was diligently pointed out by staff that the sound ordinance uh, prohibits this level of disruption before seven AM. And no later than eight PM. So, um, I don't think we're, and I believe Jenny Chandler can also chime in here. Uh, it would have to go more than just an agreement with Fred, unfortunately, uh, since we have a standing ordinance.
I, I, I will chime in. If we have an ordinance that, that has a DBA level on it. Uh, if the trucks exceed the DBA level, then they're violating the ordinance.
Correct. Yep. So, but the timing on the ordinance is currently seven AM to eight PM during the day. Outside those hours, uh, decibels cannot exceed sixty uh, decibels at this time. Is there anything else from the dais? Thank you for your comments and thank you for hearing mine. Fred, did you wanna respond to uh, the recent dialogue at this point? I know you've got about another fifteen minutes.
I'm taking notes and emailing Jerry right now, so I think it's an ongoing discussion.
Thank you. Uh, anyone from in the hall like to address this? We'll be asking you to come to the podium. At this point, I'd like to recognize former council member Eric Dahlhoff, who's been patiently waiting with his hand up on Zoom if he wants to unmute and you can take your hand down too, Eric, when you get a chance. Uh, good evening.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Welcome back to reality, you guys, all in the same room. Um, uh, ever since Recology uh, subcontracted to Solid Waste of Woolam, Willets. Uh, customer service has been insane. Who do you call? You know, you call Recology and you ask them about that issue. And they say, yeah, 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 and nothing happens. And you call Solid Waste of Willets and the phone number never gets answered, so what do you do? Uh, it took me six months a while ago to get an extra can um, set up for my house. I mean, it's just, there's no communication between Recology and Solid Waste of Willets. Uh, even though Fred says he's currently texting them, it's not really happening. This is a real problem. I wish, and I have asked many times, give me a phone number that I can call and actually talk to somebody who will deal with an issue having to do with the garbage collection. Fred, can you do that?
We'll give Fred a chance to unmute his mic and respond to you. And if not, I believe we can uh, rely on Nikki to uh, step in in Fred's absence.
Um, yes, well, I think Fred is coming on just now. I thought.
I think he wants you to take it.
No, 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 I'm, I'm not gonna throw her uh, into this fire until seven. Um, yeah, I, I, I fully uh, recognize this, this collaboration is not my norm here. The, the sole fact is you're three hours away from my headquarters, so I am left with no other choice but to create uh, a subcontract. And I, I, I have to start by apologizing. We are not, we are not endeavoring to make this a poor customer service. And Eric, I, I apologize for the hardships you had uh, trying to get ahold of somebody. I, I, I don't know what to do right now besides apologize.
How about a phone number, just for?
Yeah, a phone number. That's what I would like, a phone number.
Yeah, okay, Eric, here's one, uh, five oh three, seven eight one, four eight oh six. So that's my cell phone. Start with me. And if you're not getting it through my call center, I'll get you the answer.
Okay, there's a, a couple other issues with this I'd like to talk about, if I may. And that's, um, you mentioned that uh, disabling a backup alarm is illegal. I live on Mill Street and um, what used to happen is they would drive down Mill Street. It's a dead end. Then they would drive down and turn around and back up all the way down Mill Street with the backup beeper going. This is a, you know, five thirty, five, three, whatever. Then they would drive out, then they would drive down Mill Street and pick up the other side of the street and drive back, back up. Again, you know, with the beeper going all the way back down, turn around and then back up down Mill Street, so they could pick up the other side. So we had it four times. It's crazy. So please do not force them to have backup beepers going all the time.
Um, he might not have a choice on that. That's a DOT requirement, but I hear what you're saying and just for the public. The four times means one down and back trip each, or two down and back trips each, one for garbage and one for recycling.
No, 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 no. They drive down the street once, then they back up all the way down the street, then they turn around and they come down the street again. I mean, it's, it's, no, it's four times each. Then they come and do recycling later. Anyway.
Wow.
Now, please don't turn the backup beepers on again. It's been, it's been okay.
It's not. I, 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 I will tell you, I.
Okay, well, okay.
I know somebody was run over and killed last week, so there's.
That's a tragedy. That's horrendous.
There's no way that you can operate legally without a backup alarm moving large vehicle.
Okay, fine. Before, before you sent it over to Solid Waste of Willets, Rado used to drive down a smaller truck.
Yes.
And they could turn around at the end of the street. They never used the backup beeper. They came down the street one way, they turned around and they went back out the other way. They picked up both garbage and recycling at the same time. It was very straight. They drove down the street once, they turned around, they drove down the street again. Everything was done. And then when, when, when Sol, when, when um, Recology took over, it was the same thing for a while until you subcontracted it to Solid Waste of Willets. And then it was insane. It was just horrendous. Not only did they throw all the garbage cans and recycling bins everywhere, but they did all this beep. But they did all this beeping both ways. And, you know, you've gotten the the you've you've calmed it down about throwing all the garbage cans. I have to say the service is much better now. You actually pick up most of the cans and most of the recycling most of the time. But. It's still not very good. It's still not great. And when there's a problem, there's no phone number to call. But Fred, I assure you. Next week, we will be talking with on your cell phone, so thank you.
You're welcome to call me. I um, I I know the old collection process. It's just we literally were driving that truck for three hours to get to you. Pick up eighty cans and then drive back for three hours. So there's there's. Environmental reasons that that makes no sense. There's a ton of monetary reasons. That it absolutely does not work for us and Solid Waste of Woollets is the provider that surrounds Point Arena. We're a very rural community, an amazing community, but you have very limited options, so. That is what is there.
Fred, this is Scott. And this is for you, Nikki. I want to let you know that. Both the council and the people that are speaking to you are also telling. That they're they're doing. We 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 appreciate the people and what they're trying to do. Are you hearing us with that as well?
Of course.
Yes, it's not all about complaints. Yes, we have complaints and we believe you're listening to us. And we appreciate the results that you'll provide going forward and just providing your phone number. I thought was very brave in a public meeting, so thank you for that. And. Is there any other comments? Raised hand feature in Zoom and anybody from based on the recent comments wanna add anything? Staff? Okay. Fred, I know you're a busy person. Thank you for taking your time with us.
I I believe Jennifer has her hand up still.
Oh, I'm sorry. I missed you, Jennifer. Go ahead.
Yeah. We I can't even believe that people have to deal with three thirty. I thought five thirty was was like a struggle. I I guess I don't understand why there's even a discussion if there's a. What is Jenny call it? An ordinance already for for noise? I mean, maybe the trucks don't make them enough noise, but those backup horns. Oh, man, that's gonna really suck if you start using those again. I mean, I I don't want anybody dead, so yeah, please turn them back on, but. That really, that's the worst. That is just the worst. That truck comes down the street and then the backup horn. I mean, I don't I don't even know what to say. I just I just needed to say that because I I'm feeling Barbara, wow, three thirty? How does it work that that the the truck is in town at three thirty and at five thirty? The city isn't that big.
Two different. There's two trucks, one for garbage and one for recycling and they're driven by two different drivers. And we're not the only customer, but we're the customers that we're focusing on tonight.
Yeah. Yeah, anyway, okay, I said my piece.
Yep, thank you, Jennifer. Fred, we appreciate your time. Any response to that comment?
No, I think we've covered that.
All right. Thank you, sir. Thank you, Nikki. And did you want to say a few things before? Anything did you wanted to add before we let Fred get on his way?
Not for me. Thank you. Thank you for having us.
Thanks for being here. We're moving on to the next topic. We'll get back to the agenda. I believe it's items eight B, which is Measure. Now Measure O, Citizens Library Initiative. Can we get an introduction to this from staff?
Yeah, so. Sorry, I gotta use the microphone. Larry Riddle, who is our library advisory board member, is here to give a short presentation on what Measure O is. And answer any questions council may have.
Good evening, Larry. Good to see you again. If you can come up to the podium up there. And. Gentle. Go ahead, go ahead. Do you have the ability to spin the owl around to him maybe?
As was said, my name is Larry Riddle and although I am the city's library advisory board, LAB, Lab Rat. That's not why I'm here tonight. Tonight I'm here as a member. Of the Citizens Committee for the Library Initiative twenty twenty two. Otherwise known as Measure O. We did the signature campaign a while back. We made enough signatures that we got it on the November ballot as Measure O. We're getting going as on the effort to make people aware of what we're doing. And why we think they should vote for us in November. We have got. Buttons that are in various businesses here in. Point Arena. Oh, by the way, my address is Schooner Gulch Road.
Thank you, Larry.
And. We have business signs which some people have accepted. We have, as of supposedly yesterday, we will now have lawn signs available for those people who want them. And we are progressing on that. We're looking at getting ads on the low the locally listened to radio stations. And. Well, I lost my train of thought there.
Radio ads.
Radio ads, yes, we're getting we're we're trying to get those on. Interestingly enough, we have. Certain businesses that cannot. Accept our buttons and our business signs because we are a political campaign. We have radio stations that will not accept advertisements because we are a political campaign. And it's interesting, so what I need to get across to everybody. In the second half of this, I'm going to answer any questions or listen to any comments that anyone has to make. But the last thing I want to get across on the first part of this is that there is now a website. Which has got much, much more information on it about what we're trying to do. And that website is yesonlibraries.org. And I will spell that. Y E S O N. L I B R A R I E S dot org. Libraries dot org. And at this point, I will be happy to answer any questions or listen to any comments that anyone has.
Can we pick up the signs at the library?
Can you come up to the microphone?
Because. She asked if she could if they could pick up signs at the library. And no. The library cannot get involved in a political campaign. But if you go to yesonlibraries.org. You can request. Buttons, signs or whatever, and we will get them to you.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Any other questions or comments?
Yeah, just I want to go for it on my laptop here. You do need to put the WWW dot before yes on libraries to make it work. I'm just.
I stand corrected.
Well, I'm just saying that was the only way it wouldn't. Yeah, you spelled it great, but you need to put the WWW.
Okay, I will correct that. WWW dot yesonlibraries.org.
Nice website. Anyone else? We wrote that down. Larry, thank you for that report. It's always good seeing you.
Okay, and if you do go and patronize the Arena Theater, you will be seeing. Not an advertisement because they can't do political advertisements either, but you will find a presentation. Of about ten seconds or so.
An infomercial.
An infomercial on the Coast Community Library. Thank you.
Thank you, Larry.
Thank you, Larry.
That brings us to agenda item eight C as in Charlie. Presentation on Measure P. Essential Service Sales and Use Tax. Introduction, please.
Yes, I believe Lisa Bauer is here is going to make a short presentation about Measure P. I'm not sure if there's anyone else on the line as well.
And is that via Zoom? Okay. There's Lisa. Hi, Lisa, how are you?
I'm great. How are you all?
Wonderful, wonderful. Thanks for being here tonight. I'd like to see your presentation.
Well, I'm the I'm a talking head. It's not a presentation. It's just me explaining. I'm sorry, I'm not as sophisticated as perhaps Emily might be. Emily is has had a health issue and is in the hospital, so. I'm on the board of the Mendocino County Fire Save Council. And we're stepping in to try to fill her very large shoes. So let me just start. My name is Lisa Bauer. I live at one nine one zero one Hog Hollow Road in Yorkville. Which is a bit of ways from you folks. I'm always jealous of your fog. And I'm here to talk about the yes on P campaign. I want to thank you for your time. So yes, on Measure P was put on the ballot by all five of our county supervisors. And it is a quarter cent sales tax. I just want to be clear, this is not an increase in existing sales tax. There is, there are multiple components of sales taxes that are sunsetting this year. This quarter cent would replace a portion of some of the sunsetting sales tax. So it doesn't represent an increase in existing sales tax. It's a reallocation, if that makes sense. We we like to characterize Measure P as a no pain way. To help stabilize and support our fire departments. And ramp up our fire prevention efforts without raising current taxes. Let me let me just ask for a show of hands, even though I can't. There we go. I can't see the council. Raise your hand if you no no longer worry about fire because you know we are ready and that we have done all we need to prepare.
I will not know no raised hands on this council.
I know. I know, and I know that, believe me. That's part of why I think the supervisors saw fit to put Measure P on the ballot. As you all know, we depend on our first responders on our fire departments twenty four seven. And yet fires are getting worse each year. They're more intense, they're more frequent, they go on for a longer portion of the season. The funding that many of the fire departments have gotten for many, many years is barbecues and ice cream socials and Great Day in Elk. And and volunteers pulling together to try to get. Literally hot dog and hamburger money to run fire departments. And then juxtapose that against. Increasing costs. Fire engines are two hundred, two hundred and fifty, sometimes three hundred thousand dollars per engine. Based on how specialized they are. So the needs is very sincere. And I, you know, I Chief Suddeth is with us, I believe, I hope still. And I'm wondering if he has any comments to make specifically on some of the needs. That that might be happening in Point Arena. You may be aware of them, but I thought I would give him that opportunity. He's he's with us, I believe.
Will Chief Suddeth please make himself known in our array of characters? I believe he's by phone. I see one unmuting. Good evening, Mike.
Good evening. Yeah, it's Mike Suddeth. How are you guys?
We're doing great. How are you, Mike?
Good. Sorry you can't be there. I'm on the road. So and what you guys are talking about is gonna benefit. The entire county. And we definitely have projects in our district and the city and some improvements that we are trying to. Save up for and do, and this money would help it happen sooner than later. Starting with replacing some equipment. She's a they're a little low on their their pricing. Their everything's now. Three hundred to five hundred thousand basically for engines. We're looking to try to get a station built on the ridge with a helicopter landing zone. And it will improve the entrance ISO rating for. The rest of our district. That will help benefit us as a community. Also trying to purchase some new equipment and. In addition, one of these days to our Point Arena Station, which will we're trying to have some paid staff. Basically on call twenty four hours a day because our call volume has now gone up. A lot since the last handful of years. I don't know if you guys hear us going through town and around town, but. It's basically a call a day where it used to be maybe a call a week. So it's busy. And this money would be something that we wouldn't have to go back to our taxpayers, which we haven't since the inception of our district. To raise taxes. I have a very creative board and they've done really well. But one of these days we would have to, but this money would would get us probably for at least, I think it's ten year sunset on it. We probably could operate under that and and it would be great for the community. And that's all I have unless there's some questions or anything.
Any questions for Chief Suddeth? From the public? No, Mike. Thank you for being our fire chief. You're doing a great job.
Thank you.
Lisa?
Right. He Chief Suddeth hit the nail on the head. Countywide. The calls to the local fire departments are up by fifty two percent over the past five years. Juxtapose that against an ever increasing difficulty in many of the smaller communities and even larger ones to find volunteers. There there are examples of. Of firefighters, volunteers paying seven hundred, eight hundred dollars for their own physicals because departments can't afford it. And that's a physical to become a firefighter, to volunteer your time to become a firefighter. So we're happy that this has been put on the on the ballot. It is a general tax. It is for ten years. It's a quarter of a cent. Let me give you the website and then I I want to open up to any questions and discussion and. Boy, I would be thrilled if I could tell Emily that you folks were willing to endorse. And endorse our efforts, but the the website is yesonpmendo.org. And I am not sure if you have to do all the HTTP stuff. I'm so sorry. I didn't check it before. I have the site up. Let's see whether you do. It's WWW yesonmendo.com, not dot org dot com. I apologize. Dot com. Yesonpmendo.com. So with that said. I hope I have hit the salient points. Again, this is not my day job. And I'm open to any questions or discussion.
Yesonp.com, P for protect Mendocino County. I see that on my screen here. Lisa, you did a great job with that presentation. Is there any questions for Lisa from the public? Either on Zoom, which I failed to do earlier, use the raise hand feature or from inside the hall here? Any comments from staff or the dais here? I for one plan on supporting this. Lisa, thank you for the presentation. All right.
My pleasure.
We are at seven oh. Seven ten and we're ready to go to. Item nine, public hearing. You ready? Okay. Get an introduction?
Yes, thank you. This is a coastal development permit. Minor subdivision permit and. Use permit for the development of four units of housing on School Street. Our city planner, Scott Perkins, is here. And will take us through the application and answer any questions. I do believe representatives of David Hillmer and Lighthouse Investments are in the audience personally here and online. Thank you.
Okay, and Paul, help me out. It's been a long time since we've done this and I'm a little shook tonight because this is our first. Meeting back and there's protocol and procedure to our public events. And I believe the first part, it's been read by title by you. And I need to ask Gina or you the next question.
About the public noticing?
About the noticing.
We did notice it. It was sent to property owners in the vicinity. It was posted at the post office, City Hall and the library. And in the ICO and it was emailed to our list.
Okay, and Jenny, you you I think we got it, but you jump in here. Okay, and Jenny, you, you, I, I think we got it, but you jump in here anytime you want if I'm missing a point. Can I get a motion of satisfaction that it, the item has been properly noticed? Vice Mayor Berkey. Councilmember Wasserman. If there's no questions on the motion, uh, take a roll call vote from Gina.
Mayor Ignacio.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Berkey.
Yes.
Councilmember Dobbins.
Yes.
Councilmember Kugel.
Yes.
Councilmember Wasserman.
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you very much. Next item on that is we will now receive a staff report and after the staff report, the council will have an opportunity to ask questions. We will then open the applicant. Well, we have to open the meeting at one, or the public hearing though part, I believe. I think we're missing a step.
That's at the end. So you want to receive the staff report here from the applicant? Uh, any questions of staff?
Thank you, and you'll help me as we go forward, please. So now, thank you. Thank you, Paul. I'm, I'm glad you did have to have your mic on for that last part. Uh, so we're here to hear a staff report. Uh, I believe that would be Scott Perkins.
Sure. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Appreciate the introduction. Um, so to recap Paul's introduction as well, the applicant requests a minor subdivision coastal development permit and use permit for a residential development at one forty School Street. Additional project components are located on one twenty-five Lake Street on the parcels behind the project. The property is zoned and designated by the general plan as urban residential or UR and the parcel is presently vacant. Staff proposes that a mitigated negative declaration will reduce environmental impacts to a less than significant level pursuant to CEQA. We'll get into that a little bit more later. The proposed subdivision would divide an existing half acre parcel into two parcels of approximately a quarter acre each in a front-back configuration. Uh, with a rear parcel consisting of a panhandle to provide access to School Street, uh, which is also State Route one. As proposed, Lot One would have an access and private utility easement over a portion of the panhandle for its access and utility connections. In order to provide the pro, provide the project water service, a ten-foot wide waterline easement is proposed over two parcels to the rear which would connect the project to Point Arena Waterworks Utilities in Lake Street. Sewer hookups are proposed with a new service lateral and cleanout within the driveway and connected to the main and School Street. The project would construct a twenty-one hundred square foot structure on each of the parcels and each structure would consist of a single-family dwelling and attached second unit to form the duplex. Each of the four proposed units would be one thousand fifty square feet, less than twenty-four square feet in height and contain two bedrooms. Uh, the structures would face one another with the front of the units opening to the center of the project site. The project, the project provides two off-street parking spaces for Lot One at the farther property and two off-street parking spaces at the end of the driveway for Lot Two with a hammerhead turnaround. As concluded in a mitigated negative declaration, staff recommends that although the project could have a significant effect on the environment, mitigation measures will reduce any effects to a less than significant level. Special condition one is recommended to require implementation of the mitigation measures in the CEQA document as a condition of approval. And I'll again discuss CEQA a little bit more later in the presentation. First, a background on why each of these permits are before the council this evening. Uh, the project would place new structures on a vacant parcel, which triggers the need for a coastal development permit hence the CDP application. Uh, the projects located in the UR District, which allows single-family dwellings by right, but second units in this district require a conditional use permit, and that's why the use permit is part of the package. And then finally, the project proposes to split an existing lot into two lots uh, which subjects the project to the subdivision map act and subdivisions uh, require adoption of a CEQA initial study um, which is the CEQA document included with the, the staff report. Uh, first I'll present the relevant policies related to the minor subdivision. Uh, the resulting parcels must meet the lot geometry requirements for the UR District. And as shown in the table in the staff report, the proposed subdivision would create resulting lots that are consistent with the lot area width and depth requirements of the UR District. The municipal code also includes Title Seventeen, which regulates the division of land or subdivisions in the city. But many of these policies are applicable only to subdivisions of five or more parcels or major subdivisions. Uh, however, Title Seventeen does include drainage and grading requirements that apply to all subdivisions. The applicant submitted an engineer-designed grading and drainage plan that proposes a vegetated swell on the front of Lot One to convey stormwater to a retention basis, a retention basin in the corner of the property. And there's also a vegetated swell proposed between lots one and two that would connect to a storm drain that would also convey stormwater to the stormwater retention basin. Uh, following his review, the city engineer concluded that the project meets the drainage requirements of Title Seventeen. Next up, I'll go into the land use and zoning considerations of the project and how they conform to the requirements of the UR District. UR District again permits single-family residences as by right uses, but second units are conditionally permitted uses. So the proposed land uses would be consistent with the district if the conditional use permit is ultimately approved by council allowing the secondary units. Regarding height, the maximum building height limit in UR District is thirty-five feet per the zoning code. Uh, the proposed development would consist of one-story residences with the maximum height above finished grade of less than twenty-four feet. So that complies with the maximum height limit of the district by about eleven feet. The new structures are also required to comply with zoning district uh, setback requirements. There's a table in the staff report that shows the project's consistency with these standards. And as proposed, it meets all the setback requirements of the UR District. There are other policies in the zoning code that are specifically applicable to this development, one of which is accessory structures. The project proposes to construct a tool shed at the northeast corner of Lot Two. Uh, but the application materials do not provide specific dimensions or a height for the proposed shed. Uh, based on the scale, it looks like it's about eighty square feet in size. The zoning code requires accessory structures be located outside of setbacks and ten feet from other buildings on site. And in the UR District, these structures can't exceed fifteen feet in height. Uh, the tool shed appears to be consistent with these requirements, but since there's a lack of information on the application about its height and dimensions, special condition three is included um, requiring that the building permit after the fact of this coastal development permit, use permit and subdivision um, would show that the structure is consistent with these um, accessory structure requirements in the zoning code. The zoning code requires new developments in multiple zoning districts to submit a landscaping and screening plan as part of a permit application. But the UR District is not one of the districts where these are required. So these landscaping and screening requirements are not applicable to the project. The zoning code enumerates the required parking spaces based on land use. Parking space requirements for residential uses are in most cases two spaces per unit. California government code sets standards for second units and prohibits localities from requiring parking for second units in many cases. And as a result, parking would not be required for either of the second units and the overall required parking would be two spaces per lot. The project proposes to provide two parking spaces for each lot consistent with this requirement. Um, I want to provide some important context here regarding parking. The state code prohibiting parking requirements for second units took immediate effect upon its adoption. However, the policy does not take hold in coastal zone jurisdictions until local LCPs are amended to be consistent with the new state requirements. As of this date, the city is working on an LCP amendment to address housing and bring the city's code into alignment with state policy. Since the LCP amendment is not yet complete, the current zoning code parking standards, the current zoning code parking standards technically could apply. The most applicable current parking standard in the code would be one point five spaces per dwelling unit, multi-family projects with two or fewer bedrooms per unit. This standard would require three spaces per lot or six total. In conversations with other planning departments in our area, many are using the state's newer standards in the interim while their LCP amendments are being updated to reflect the new requirements in order to encourage housing development using the new tools during the lengthy LCP amendment process. When discussing the project with the applicant at the time of the initial application, staff considered that by the time the project would actually be constructed, it's likely that the parking standards would be reduced from three spaces per lot to two, to align with the state legislation. In an effort to be housing friendly in the current housing shortage and use the tools at the city's disposal to encourage housing de, development, staff proposes using the soon-to-be-established state standards for parking instead of the sunsetting city code requirements. One concern from staff was that if the applicant had to wait for the LCP amendment um, to be complete to take advantage of the new state housing tools like parking reduction, he may have waited to submit his application until the LCP amendment is complete, which at the time was two years away. Now present, the amendment will likely be complete the next year. So in summary, the on-the-books requirement would be for the, would be for the project to provide three parking spaces per lot for the proposed project. And the council has the authority to apply this standard. However, in keeping with other coastal zone jurisdictions who up to encourage housing, staff proposes city council apply the state standard of two spaces per parcel while the LCP amendment is in process. Otherwise, regarding circulation and access, the project was referred to Caltrans for comment and consideration. Caltrans currently developing a project that would realign the curb and sidewalk across the parcel frontage to provide for standard roadway shoulders and pedestrian facilities. To accommodate the improvements, Caltrans requested a thirty-foot setback from the existing highway center line to ensure spacing for their future project alignment. The request would prohibit parking, fencing, retaining walls and structures in the setback, but would allow landscaping in the buffer. Special condition four is recommended prohibiting development within that Caltrans buffer. Additionally, the city adopted a community action plan in twenty-ten that recommends transportation and circulation improvements, including future trails through the city. The community action plan includes a trails map that shows a potential future trail connection um, which is the school trail between Lake Street and School Street to provide additional access for students through the property across from Harper's Cut Off Trail. This would be a mid-block crosswalk with an easement on the properties that are subject to this application. Per the zoning code, permits for new development shall include a condition of approval that a twenty-five-foot easement, twenty-five-foot wide easement be included in the project approval to provide trailways that are designated on an adopted local plan. The proposed project and utility connections through the parcels to the north would trigger this requirement. City council discussed this trailway at their September twenty-fourth, twenty-nineteen meeting, and at the time, an applicant was proposing to develop parcels that would trigger this easement. Council members then voted four to one to not pursue further negotiation of easement and the minutes from that agenda item are provided in the staff report. Exceptions to the trailway requirement can be made by council in several instances and one such instance is if the council finds that adequate access exists nearby. To support the assertion that adequate access exists nearby and the trail is not necessary, the applicant submitted a letter for council consideration. The relevant claims supporting this finding in the applicant's letter are that the proposed trail does not provide a significant decrease in the total distance for high schoolers to walk to school along the same road and there are existing alternative paths that are shorter in total distance than the proposed path. To waive the requirement for an easement through the subject parcels for trail access, council would need to find that adequate access exists nearby and make the supplemental findings listed at the conclusion of the staff report. Staff does recommend waiving the easement requirement based on the justification provided by the applicant. But should council determine that there's not adequate access nearby and the easement should be required, a condition of approval would be necessary requiring the recordation of an easement consistent with the community action plan. It is likely the applicant would have to reconfigure the site plan to address this easement. The zoning code also has visual resource policies applicable to the project. The code requires that new development be sited and designed to minimize adverse impacts on scenic areas from scenic roads or public viewing areas to the maximum extent feasible. The only public views around the proposed project are located along School Street and from Arena Union. The existing public views from School Street look northerly at the property and are backdroped by residential development. And from Arena Union, the public view of the project looks southwesterly where an existing fence line between the parcels shields the current public view. Staff recommends that public views will not be adversely affected by the project largely due to its location on the non-seaward side of Highway One. The zoning code also has standards for the proposed structures subject to this proposal. Materials and colors per the code shall be compatible with the building's natural and man-made surroundings. And the plans propose to construct the residences with fiber cement horizontal lap siding on exterior walls. Paint colors and material colors for the roofing are not specified. Staff recommends special condition five to ensure the project is consistent with the city's standards related to color for the new development, since colors are not proposed as part of the application. The architectural review portion of the code also requires development be planned to avoid removing trees. This project is located on a vacant lot lacking tree cover. No trees will be removed as a result of the project. Regarding natural resources, the provided biological scoping survey inventory of the site for special sta, special status species and includes a list of plant species along with habitat and plant community characteristics. Ground surveys confirm that no wetland features are present in the study area. The scoping survey concluded that the project would not result in a significant negative impact to any special status resources and that there are no environmentally sensitive habitat areas on the parcels. The report did recommend a collection of measures to minimize impacts to species that may be seasonally or temporarily present within the area, including nesting birds and special status amphibians. These are included as mitigation measures in the CEQA mitigated negative declaration and enforced by special condition one. U.S. Fish and Wildlife biologist Gregory Schmidt visited the site to determine the potential for Point Arena Mountain Beaver and he concluded that the entire parcel and all adjacent parcels are unsuitable for Point Arena Mountain Beaver habitat. To ensure no significant impacts to archaeological resources, a record search was conducted uh, with the Northwest Information Center at Sonoma State University and that identified a study from twenty-seventeen that noted that the area contains a recorded archaeological resource. Um, a follow-up investigation was conducted to determine the extent for the possible resource and the results of that investigation concluded that there are no indications of resources previously thought to be present. The investigation did identify at least one, possibly two historical wells on the property. And as a result, the Sonoma State's Anthropological Studies Center recommends that the wells be avoided during construction. These are located outside the footprint of proposed development, so impacts to these resources would be avoided consistent with those recommendations. I'd earlier mentioned that for utilities, there's a connection to Point Arena Waterworks through the rear of the parcel to Lake Street and a connection to the wastewater system in School Street. Point Arena Waterworks issued a will serve letter in, on December ninth, twenty-twenty-one confirming that water service is available via twelve-inch main in Lake Street. In order for the project to adequately be served by utilities, the water connection to Lake Street needs to be finalized prior to development. So special condition six is included requiring the water line be recorded prior to recording the final map for the subdivision. There are numerous project findings and conditions in the staff report. This is because the city's code requires specific findings for approving CDPs, use permits and subdivisions. And each of those findings must be made by council to approve the project. Additionally, as I mentioned, special condition one includes all the mitigation measures identified in the CEQA mitigated negative declaration that was circulated for thirty days for public and agency comment. We did not receive any comments on the CEQA initial study. Special condition one is not required to be a special condition for these permits because they're part of the CEQA document, but they're included here for easier reference uh, when verifying implementation of the project meets CEQA requirements. Usually when the building permit comes, we're digging everywhere looking for all the requirements. So to duplicate them here just makes them more likely to be adhered to during uh, development. So based on the analysis of the project for consistency with city code, staff recommends council approves the minor subdivision CDP and use permit and recommends the council adopt the mitigated negative declaration and adopts the findings and conditions of approval in the staff report. I'll do my best to answer any questions that come up. I believe that as Paul said, there are agents for the applicant also present who can help answer project-specific questions. Thank you.
Uh, the mayor had to step out for a moment, so I'm going to step in. And I believe at this point, we open the discussion for any questions for Mr. Perkins. Um, do any council members have any questions for Mr. Perkins at this point?
I have a question for you.
Yes.
And that is on the, the, the parking, uh, I have concerns that, uh, given that there is a zero street parking and um, and that uh, the uh, the confusion in my mind between the, the pre-existing two parking spots per, per dwelling, per household. And uh, you, you had uh, so I feel that, that uh, four for the, the whole project is inadequate. Uh, I know that uh, the state law is changing, but it seems to be in conflict with the cities. You, you had mentioned that it was multi-family and so it's two lots with a uh, primary house and an ADU. Does that, I, I, that doesn't sound like multi-family to me.
Sure. The, the zoning code does not have a parking requirement for a second unit. Um, so looking at, there's single-family requirements and multi-family requirements in the zoning code for parking. Um, so it, it appears that the most applicable policy to um, to apply to this project would be multi-family as opposed to single-family, which would require one and a half parking spaces for units that have the amount of bedrooms that these have. So it would require three as opposed to um, the two spaces that are proposed.
So that would be a, for each of the, the two separate parcels, it would be a half of a parking. So that would be a, for each of the, uh, the two separate parcels, it would be a half of a parking space per?
It would be one and a half parking spaces per unit per parcel, so there's two units on each parcel, so it'd be three units or three parking spaces. Uh, just per parcel, uh, based on the current code requirements.
It, well, yeah, so my, my, I'm, uh, rather than a question, I'm just gonna make, make the statement that I feel that, uh, that, that three per parcel is, is inadequate for the, uh, for the, uh, the four bedrooms, two, uh, two households. Right, with the proposed two and, and four seems to be a, a more reasonable, uh, uh, number, especially considering that there, there is no on-street, uh, on-street parking for, uh, for a long stretch of Highway One, so it just doesn't seem like enough parking to me.
Any other questions for Mr. Perkins from the dice?
I just would like to, uh, support, uh, Jim's contention that, um, that two spaces, uh, uh, per unit, that is, one space per residence is, residence is not adequate. And, um, and I, I would say three would be the absolute minimum in my mind that should be required, uh, per duplex, that is, one and a half per unit.
Okay, um, anything else on the parking? Is there, and is there any way to, to, in the design, to, to alter the design to facilitate that? Additional parking?
That'd be a question for the applicant, I believe.
Okay, um, uh, the mayor has stepped out, um, because he realized that he lives too close to this development to be able to comment on it, so he has recused himself at this point. Um, and so I am going to continue with, um, the question and answer period. So I have a question for you, Mr. Perkins. Um, you mentioned that the buildings will not exceed twenty-four feet in height, but I couldn't tell from the plans just exactly how tall they are?
Right, I had asked the applicant to provide information because I had the same concern looking at the plans. I couldn't find their exact height. Um, I believe that the figure, the number that I was given was in between twenty, twenty-one feet in height. So I put, um, as an approval, less than twenty-four feet in height to kind of cover that amount, and since the height limit in the zoning district is thirty-five feet, um, if it's twenty or twenty-one or twenty-three, it's, um, within the height requirements in U R District.
Thank you, and also, um, there's fences around the yards, and I was wondering what height those fences are going to be?
Um, I don't believe that's part of the proposal. There's these interior fencing yards. Anything above, I think it's six feet, requires a building permit by code, and then the city of Point Arena Code, I believe, has a maximum height limit of eight feet for interior fences that are outside of setbacks. Um, so when they would come in for a building permit, we would have to review the fences for consistency with the city's fence codes. Um, but I do not see a proposed fence height in the plan set.
Okay, um, in the, um, plans, there's a parking turnaround for the second set of residences, and I imagine that turnaround is not intended to be used for any kind of parking. Uh, what would preclude anybody from parking there?
Um, short of a condition of approval or anything that would require striping of that or signage, um, to not permit it, there's nothing that we would preclude it. It is required so that vehicles would not have to back out onto Highway One, that they'd be able to turn around and pull forward. Um, but you're right, if there's a car parked in that turnaround, then it doesn't serve its purpose. Um, we could consider a condition of approval that, you know, parking not be provided in that hammerhead turnaround, and they would be um, in violation of their permit if they were regularly parking a vehicle there.
Yeah, I think that's something to consider. Um, do you happen to know, are these residences slated to be prefabs or are they stick-built?
I'll defer to the applicant on that one.
Okay, great, and, um, do you happen to know how many bedrooms these residences are?
They're two each. Each of the four units would have two bedrooms.
Thank you. Any other questions, folks, up here?
I'd like to make a comment on what you had said about the, that because there, I feel there's inadequate parking, I think that people are going to, to look in any location here to, uh, to find a parking space, which is going to complicate uh, the whole, uh, the whole parking scenario. Uh, I think that if, if spaces, spaces to turn around are, uh, filled with cars, people are going to do what they have to do, which is to back out on the Highway One, which is a, a real dangerous thing. I would like to make a, make a, a question about, uh, my understanding is that, uh, Caltrans wants to maintain a right-of-way for thirty feet of the center line. Is, is that the right number?
Right, yeah, they requested thirty feet from center line.
So I'm just wondering about the, the development that's, that's going to take place, um, here as far as the, uh, the ingress to the, uh, to the drive, if that shouldn't be, uh, developed with that in mind, so that there, that it's, you know, so they don't install that and then it just gets torn up.
Hmm, when they go for their development permit, they'll have to get a Caltrans encroachment permit for the work in the right-of-way, and at that time, they'll have to meet Caltrans standards for the apron and the approach, um, and its design, so at that point, Caltrans will be able to ensure that whatever happens to their encroachment permit at the building phase, uh, that what's put in is consistent with their future improvement plans as, as much as possible.
And, uh, if I could just get some clarification, you talked about the, uh, the, the previous, uh, trails that were proposed there and that that would be something that would have to be, uh, looked into and, and mitigated by the council before, uh, an approval?
Sure, yeah, the, the community action plan identified a trail going from School Street to Lake Street, basically through the driveway. Um, you know, through the, uh, I guess that's the, um, the side of the property line. Um, that's on the community action plan map. Uh, the zoning code does require that whenever there's a development where a trail is shown on an adopted city plan, which the community action plan is, that a twenty-five-foot easement should be offered, um, an offer to dedicate in case somebody wants to pick up that easement and provide the trail. Um, there are ways that, uh, council can waive these trail requirements. The only real applicable way in this case would be if there's a finding that adequate access exists elsewhere. Um, the memo from, or letter from the applicant that's included as an attachment to the staff report goes into uh, distances around the block, you know, if the trail's not there, and concludes that this trail, you know, would not provide access that isn't adequately provided elsewhere. So if the council agrees with that finding, it could waive the trail. Um, if the council does not think adequate access exists elsewhere, then you would not make those findings and, and would require the trail through the property.
Can I just jump in and ask everybody to speak into their microphones when they're speaking? Uh, there are members of the public out there that say they aren't able to hear a couple of the council members very well. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. Um, is it appropriate for me right now to open the questions to the public?
You know, can we take a recess?
Should we take a three-minute recess just to get on the same page?
Yes.
Okay, if everybody's, um, okay with that, we'll take a three-minute recess. Um, the time right now is seven twenty, I can't quite read it on the screen.
Seven forty.
Seven forty, so we'll be back at seven forty-three. Thanks for your patience.
Launch the sound again.
Okay, now, now are we good?
Can you hear me, Jenny?
Yes, just came back.
We're good? Okay, all right, um, sorry for the delay. I know that was more than three minutes, but we're back, and, um, it was a, a question of, uh, council members' proximity to the project, and, um, we had to ascertain whether council member Kugel was, um, too close to the project, and he is close, but as far as legal counsel is concerned, it's a question of, uh, benefit or loss, um, to Mr. Kugel if this project is approved or not approved, and, um, there is no financial benefit to him, so, um, we're going to allow council member Kugel to stay on the dice right now. Um, so that's what all that was about. Um, thanks for your patience. Um, we're gonna continue now, um, with questions for Mr. Perkins from the public. Is that correct? Yes, okay, so, um, is there any member from the public who has their hand raised or is in our audience tonight who would like to ask a question?
Mayor, Mayor, Mayor Berkey, I think you need to formally open the public hearing, because this is a public.
Okay, thank you, Jenny. All right, at this point, I'm gonna formally open the hearing to, um, all comers. Um, is there anything I need to say?
I, I think you need to get a motion and a second and, and vote to open.
Can I get a motion to open the public hearing?
Still moved.
Thank you.
And seconded.
Thank you, council member Wasserman, and a second from council member Kugel. Um, can I get a roll call vote, please?
Yes, Vice Mayor Berkey.
Yes.
Um, council member Kugel.
Yes.
Council member Dobbins.
Yes.
And council member Wasserman.
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. Thank you. At this point, I'm going to open the, um, the hearing to questions from the public. Um, would anybody? Would anybody, I see, is it Mindy Ingram? Has her hand up?
Yeah, can you hear me okay?
Yeah, if you could state your name and where you live.
Yes, I'm Mandy Ingram. I live currently in the Santa Cruz area, but I am the owner of 130 School Street with my husband. And I don't have a question. I do have comments. Is this the appropriate time to raise comments as well?
Yes, thank you.
Yeah, well, thank you for opening this up for a public hearing. Our family's owned the property next door since 1989. We're currently renting the home to a local family as we are both employed outside of the area. And I did appreciate Mr. Perkins' presentation earlier. I just wanted to really emphasize the point that I don't think is being respected in this development. It's that the urban residential zone, per the municipal code, says it's suitable for single-family residential uses and a second unit as conditionally permitted. And the project is proposing what they're calling two single-family residences and two second units. But all four of them, the second units and the single-family units, are both 1,050 square feet each. So we believe that the second unit is really disguised as another single-family unit on each parcel disguised as a second unit, as they will be the same size. So really, what it looks like is being proposed are four 1,050-square-foot single-family units and potentially up to now, it was four spaces, but potentially six spaces in a .48-acre parcel. We don't believe that it's consistent with the urban residential zoning definition. And we also don't think that development, this development as proposed, is within the neighborhood and surrounding community or that it's compatible with the neighborhood and the surrounding community per the Point Arena Municipal Code. It's mainly because it will result in uncharacteristically dense development in the neighborhood. I know that it's defined as urban residential, but we see wildlife all the time in the area and the trees and roving around our property and next door in the empty lot. And this development will diminish much, if not all, of the open vegetated space on the lot. And also, as I just learned tonight, you know, not respecting the trailway easement is another issue that we'd like to raise. So tonight, we do urge the council to not approve the conditional use permit as proposed, at least for the development as proposed. And we recommend the developer revise the proposal to reduce the footprint and square footage of the dwellings and the driveways. Thank you.
Thank you, Mandy. If you don't mind taking your hand down, that would be great. Thank you. Anybody else? Do we have anyone in the public who would like to speak? Okay, should we do that now since nobody else has their hand raised? Okay, the applicant is invited to speak. Oh, wait, okay. Justin, is that Justin Roger?
Rediger, yep.
Rediger, okay, you're so far away that it's hard for me to read your name. Thank you. Would you state your name and your position?
My name is Justin Rediger, and I'm representing Life's House Development. So developer, and we're really, we're really being, this is the Sea Ranch Lodge that's putting forth this development. So this is purely for workforce housing. As everyone knows, it's really hard to find housing. And we, as, as saying, we as the Sea Ranch Lodge, struggle with finding employees that can, you know, make the trek out because they can't find housing out here on the coast. And so that's the motivation for trying to build these units. And, you know, trying to reach a density just so it's financially makes sense for us to build these units and, you know, to house our employees. So that's the, that's the goal of the project. And it's, and I also want to thank Scott and Paul, who've been really great to work with, with getting all this, just getting it to this point. But yeah, it's, it's been, it's been going through a lot of hurdles just to get to this point even with getting an easement, going through CEQA, and try to meet the, all the requirements. So we're just trying to make it as financially feasible as possible so we can actually house more people on the coast, so.
Thank you, Justin. Would you clarify for me? You said you're from the Sea Ranch Lodge. Is that correct?
Correct, yes. So I'm, I'm, I'm work for the contractor who's, or the developer who's doing these, these projects, but we are working for the Sea Ranch Lodge.
Oh, okay. Thanks for that clarification. Should I ask the applicant to respond to any input? Is our applicant here tonight? Okay, would you come to the podium and identify yourselves, please?
My name is Tony Gara, and I live in Cloverdale, California.
My name is Christina Chetan. I'm the general manager of the Sea Ranch Lodge, and I live at the Sea Ranch.
My name is Christina Chetan. I'm the general manager of the Sea Ranch Lodge, and I live at the Sea Ranch.
Would you like to respond to anything you've heard tonight? Is your microphone on?
Yes, I believe so. I think I can certainly understand the concerns of our neighbors. On the other hand, I just would like to mention that we have many families from Point Arena who work for us and who are continuously looking for housing. Interestingly enough, within the last months, I've had four inquiries for us to find housing. We provide some subsidized housing for our workforce. We rent places wherever we can find them and help them be able to afford them because, as you know, living along the coast is not inexpensive. And this would really provide for us an opportunity to have a little bit more of a structured approach to workforce housing. I've worked for properties before who have had workforce housing, and it's a very well-managed program that we take responsibility for. And whereas I can understand that as a neighbor, you might be worried that there's too many people there. That is not something that you should be concerned about because we would limit that and regulate that. And if I'm just speaking from the heart, I feel for all these families who have to live far away to bring their kids to school and sometimes have to drive to two or three different schools just to take care of all the different age groups and everything else, and then have to commute to work on top of it. So it is really, truly something that we want to do for our employees and for no other reason.
And I have a response in, related to the trail easement. We just feel that the, the, the trail easement doesn't significantly decrease the total distance of travel for residents and schools, high schoolers walking to school. And it, it puts in sort of an unfair burden on the developer of one for, on us to pay for. And we would have to get permission from the other neighbors, and we would have to pay for that. And so it's not really, it, it seems like we're, the burden falls on us and when it really should be a community effort. If, if we were required to do that, and it, we see, we feel like the, the, it doesn't, there's no huge benefit to add that easement because of, it doesn't significantly shorten anybody's travel time. And then on, on the, on the other topic of the density of housing, I mean, there's a shortage of housing here, and I live in Cloverdale, and I have to commute to the lodge. And obviously, if there was more housing up here, I would live here. And I've been looking for somewhere. And so it, it's a, the community can't grow, and, and, you know, we're, the caliber of person that we're trying to bring into the community is, you know, working families and professionalism. And so we, we feel that it's ultimately going to benefit the community. And it'll benefit the community financially, too. Imagine eight people living in town and spending their money at the local shops. And, and that'll have a big impact on the city. So.
Thank you. Are there any questions for applicants? Yes, Richie, Councilmember Wasserman.
Yes, well, first I must say that you're correct in assuming that there is a high priority here in the city of Point Arena for workforce housing. We've made efforts in that direction for some time and continue to do so. But I do have a couple of questions I'd like to put to you.
Richie, can you speak into the microphone?
Sorry, yes, I do have a couple of questions I'd like to ask you. I'm a little confused as to the owners of record of this parcel and this project. Is it owned in some way by this, by Sea Ranch?
It'll, it's owned by the Sea Ranch Lodge.
I see.
Yeah.
So Lighthouse Investment is the LLC that represents any workforce housing. The workforce housing that I was referring to earlier, some of the units that we rent and then give to our employees for subsidized amounts also falls under the same Lighthouse Investment.
Yes, thank you. So as workforce housing, will these rents, this may not be a question you can answer specifically, but what level of rental cost will there be to the workers that will be living there?
We have not determined the rent amount, but we will make it such that the employees can afford it because we know what their wages are and how much percentage they should be paying for rent. Therefore, that's how it will be determined, and that's how we determine our rents now. They're heavily, heavily subsidized. For example, you probably are all aware that within the Sea Ranch, there's Burbank Housing. And you can rent two-bedroom units or one-bedroom units, three-bedroom units even. And recently, one of our employees applied there and was actually granted a two-bedroom apartment. And the one two-bedroom apartment that I'm renting out to an employee now was equivalent to that housing.
I see. Thank you. That's all I have for now. Thank you very much.
I have a question for you, Christina. You mentioned that you would regulate the number of occupants per dwelling. And how do you propose to do that?
Well, let's say they have to sign a lease with us. And within the lease, you can state the number of people that can live in a unit.
I'm, I'm just wondering on the legality of that, if that's really possible? I mean, if you have a couple who rent one of your units and they have a baby, well, now there's three people living in that unit. I'm, I'm just wondering if that's really feasible? And then if, in the future, you sell that development to somebody else, what would preclude them from allowing higher density in those units?
We cannot control what a future owner would do. I can tell you that we have no intent of selling this if we can get it approved and built because we're desperate for housing. And yes, you can limit the amount of people that live in a unit. That is within the sublease or lease agreement. It's always spelled out. And I believe that a two-bedroom unit will probably be, you know, if you have two adults and two children living there, that would be a normal amount of people inhabiting that unit.
Okay, thank you for that answer. Any other questions? Does our public have any questions for the applicants? I'm looking for raised hands. Not seeing any. Richie, Councilmember Wasserman?
If there are no further questions from the public, I would like to ask one more. I, going back to the parking situation, do you find it in, possible to add that third parking space per duplex?
I'm, I understand that parking is an issue for you as well as an issue clearly for the neighbor who would not be in favor of having more parking spaces. But we can certainly work with our architect in trying to look at that. Another, another possibility is to look at transportation, public transportation or transportation provided by us. Because again, it's very expensive to have to commute, and Sea Ranch is not, is relatively far, right? It's, it takes 40 minutes to get here most times, and it's a lot of gas, therefore a lot of cost. So we realize that this is a very important community for our business because the children of our employees go to school here. And so we believe in sustainability, and we want to foster sustainability. And so we have had many different discussions about transportation and how to get people to and from work. So rather than adding yet another parking spot and therefore increasing, you know, the expenditures and pollution and whatever else, maybe it makes more sense to look at something alternative.
So if I understand you correctly, you would be willing to entertain providing transportation for your employees to and from the Sea Ranch Lodge? Am I understanding you correctly?
If that's what the employees would be interested in, then we would certainly look at it.
Thank you. Any other questions? Anybody?
I can address a question that was asked earlier.
Yes.
And the construction type will be stick-built. We'll build it onsite normally. Traditional construction.
Traditional construction, not prefabs?
Correct.
Thank you for remembering that. What do we do now? What's our next step?
I'd like to make a comment.
Okay, can I have a comment, please?
Close the public hearing if there's no more members of the public who want to speak.
Okay, at this point.
And then take it back to council for discussion.
I'd like to close the public hearing if there's no more members of the public who would like to speak. This is your, your last chance, so here we go. I'm going to close the public hearing now and turn it back to the council for discussion. Councilman Kugel.
Well, my comment is that I only got my binder yesterday morning. It was, it was left for, for me on Friday, and I intended to pick it up on Friday. But even that adds a better option than yesterday morning. There's a lot of information here, and I would propose that the council consider taking some time to, to consider what, what's been delivered here and the, the issues of trails and parking and, and other things that haven't come up. And continue this until next month.
Okay, I'll take that under consideration. Is there any other opinions? Yes?
I'm, I'm thinking about the proposed, the trail proposal. I thought that we had addressed that with the last applicant to, that, on the lead here with this proposal project, and I thought we had tabled that, that trail proposal. Go ahead.
We did for that particular project, but there was no formal action taken to remove that from the, the cap of the Community Action Plan. So in our code, Scott can probably explain this better than I can, but in our code, if there's anything regarding a trail proposal in a project, that has to be addressed. And so that's why it's being brought back again. The council can remove that as a requirement with some findings that I believe the applicant has provided. But I'm going to let Scott follow up on that because he's got much better handle on it than I do from a planning perspective.
No, Paul, you did a great job. I don't have too much to add. Yeah, it does look like, I wasn't at the meeting in 2019 when this was pretty. Yeah, it does look like, I wasn't at the meeting in 2019 when this was previously discussed, but looking at the minutes, there was a discussion about requiring that easement for a different project, but it doesn't look like at any point during that meeting that the Community Action Plan was amended in such a way to remove that trail connection. So that proposed trail connection is still part of the Community Action Plan. And per the zoning code, if there's an adopted local plan showing a proposed trail, the easement needs to be provided unless findings can be made that adequate access exists elsewhere. And I don't think such a finding was made in 2019, but based on the minutes, it looks like council concluded that the trail connection was not necessary for that project. But the finding would have to be made as well for this project.
Thank you, Scott. Mr. Perkins. Okay, any other discussion of this project? Okay. I'm feeling like we need to resolve the parking issue as well as the trail issue. And you know, we're going to have to revisit the trail between school and Lake Streets. And I think that back in 2017 or whenever, 19, when we did it, there were some really good arguments made for why we don't need to have the trail going through this property. And I'm still of that opinion, not what we came to a conclusion of back then holds now. This project isn't substantially different from what was being proposed back in 2019. And I think the same principles should apply. That's just my opinion. I think we do need to revisit the parking because it's just kind of a given that if you have two adults in a house, they're both going to have a car. I mean, that's just the way it is here. Everybody needs a car. And public transportation is pretty non-existent. Having just two parking spaces for each dwelling, well, each of the, well, there's four dwellings with only two parking spaces for each, isn't enough. And so I would like to see the developer revisit the parking situation. Do I have any agreement on that? Does anybody want to discuss that?
I agree. I think.
I'm in agreement.
Yeah, so at this point, I don't think we can make a determination on this application. I would like to send it back.
Are you suggesting we continue the hearing?
Yes, I'm suggesting, I'd like a motion to continue the hearing.
I would like to make that motion.
Anna, is there any discussion?
I'd like to see that we at least discuss perhaps tonight the mitigation for parking. See what could be done instead of postponing this.
Well, I'm proposing that we bring it back to the developer to show us a different parking plan. It's not our job to figure out what the parking plan is. It's the developers. So I would like to send it back to the developer for them to come next month with a better parking plan that we can all agree on. So I would like a motion to continue the hearing until next month.
I would like to make the motion to continue this hearing until next month's meeting.
Can I get a second?
A second, Ed.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Kugel and Councilmember Wasserman. Can I get a roll call vote, please?
You may, yes. Vice Mayor Berkey.
Yes.
Councilmember Dobbin.
No.
Councilmember Kugel.
Yes.
Councilmember Wasserman.
Yes.
Go ahead, Gina. Okay, Gina doesn't have anything to say, so the motion carries and we're going to continue this discussion next month. Are we good?
I think so. So we will, Scott and I will discuss this with the developers and bring it back at the next meeting.
Scott Perkins?
Scott Perkins, yes, I'm sorry. On October 23rd, I think is the date.
So I have a question. Is there a possibility in the interim for council members no more than two at a time? And the same to meet with Scott to clarify some of these issues so that we have the information we feel we need for the next meeting?
I will defer to our city attorney on that.
Thank you.
Jenny?
What I would suggest is if you're going to meet with Scott, you need to disclose at the next public meeting what you discussed with Scott because otherwise you're in danger of having what we call a serial meeting and we don't want to do that. So if two of you want to go off and talk to Scott and two other people want to go off and talk to Scott, just when you show up at the next council meeting, disclose what it was you discussed.
For individuals, does that hold as well?
If any more than two of you have a discussion with Scott, you have engaged in a serial meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Would you like to suggest appointing two people to participate in this before the next meeting and then reporting out? That way we don't run into a serial meeting conflict.
Mr. Mayor, is this an ad hoc committee that we're forming?
No.
I don't believe so.
It's just, what are we calling it?
It's information gathering. More than one council member can, I mean, two council members can talk in a process like is being suggested. But like council has said, they have to report back at the next meeting what that was about.
Thank you.
I would volunteer to be one of those two council members.
Anyone else that would like to join Councilmember Kugel in speaking with the city manager and the city planner on this topic? Is everybody okay with Councilmember Kugel going, participating? I am. Yep, okay. So there's your direction.
Thank you.
Okay, are you back?
I'm back.
Okay, Mr. Mayor.
Thanks. All right. Item 10, reports and action items. 10A, RFP for grant-funded sea level rise vulnerability assessment. Can we get a report from staff?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll be presenting the staff report as well. In early February, the Coastal Commission released a notice of funding availability for a non-competitive grant for projects designed to assist local governments in assessing impacts and planning for coastal resilience, including adapting to the impacts of climate change and sea level rise. Following council's direction to submit a grant application for the available sea level rise funding, the city worked with Coastal Commission staff to develop a project that's consistent with their grant guidelines. And the city's application was approved. A standard agreement was executed on August 22nd, 2022. City staff has developed a request for proposals to solicit consulting firms with expertise in completing sea level rise analyses. The content of the RFP follows the approved scope of work from the approved grant and requires the consultant to produce the deliverables that are funded by the grant. The RFP includes an evaluation system by which proposals will be judged. The RFP asks consultants to provide an analysis of sea level rise threats in the Cove as well as climate change-related impacts from Arena Creek. In addition to asking for the consultant's proposal for these items, the evaluation system also ranks consultants based on their expertise and experience completing these studies and their experience in coordinating their findings with the sea level rise guidelines adopted by the Coastal Commission. Once completed, the study would inform future projects in Arena Cove related to sea level rise adaptation and creek restoration. It's staff's opinion that the sea level rise assessment would serve as the foundation for future planning efforts in Arena Cove. Concurrent with the council's review of the RFP, the Coastal Commission had also asked to review the draft RFP for consistency with our grant application and agreement. The city received a response from the Coastal Commission on Friday that they were not requesting any modifications to the RFP in your agenda packet. Staff seeks direction from council to release the RFP to procure qualified firms. Additionally, staff seeks direction from council on the constitution of the committee that will review the proposals. It's common for three reviewers to evaluate the proposals and the outcome of their rankings would be presented to council at a later date to enter to an agreement with the recommended firm. If you have any questions, I can try to answer them.
Is there any questions from the council? Okay, how about direction then? I think that's what Mr. Perkins is looking for.
Public comment.
And before we go to direction, how about, thank you for that. Is there anyone from the public that would like to use the raise hand feature or anyone from the audience that would like to raise their hand to be recognized on this topic and ask questions of the city planner? Not seeing any. That was a very good presentation. Thank you very much. Counsel, I'm open to direction.
Go for it. Let's just get that RFP out there.
So anyone else, any opposing comments? Do you feel like you're directed to go for it?
What we're also hoping is that you can identify the appropriate team to review the RFP or to review the proposals. I, of the understanding, the two members of the council are on an Arena Cove ad hoc committee. So that might be a
An assignment?
An assignment, yeah. But you know, there's lots of ways it can be reviewed. It's just usually it's three different people that rank it based on the scoring criteria. So looking for direction on who those folks should, could be.
Count, Vice Mayor Berkey?
I'd like to see our planner, Scott Perkins, be on that review committee. And who are our two council members who, us two? I don't feel qualified to review this. So I would say no to me.
Does any other council member want to join Richie?
If I may just make a comment. I think you're just as qualified as I am, Barbara. I'd like to see you. But I know you have a lot on your plate also. I probably am not qualified either at the highest level, but I would do my best to make a choice that would benefit the city.
Would you like a different assignment for the harbor commission?
What do you mean?
Well, do you still like to be on that ad hoc?
Yeah, I want to be on that because I'm interested in other things that have to do with the harbor. But I think Richie has the historical knowledge and I don't. And so I would propose a committee of Scott Perkins, Richie Wasserman, and Paul Anderson.
Any objections from the council?
That sounds good to me.
Thank you for the support. Any comments from the public? I'd like to hear from Bill Arana or William Arana, please. If you can unmute your mic and please remember when you're unmuting your mic, please state your name for the record and your address.
Hi, this is Billy Arana. I would like to make a comment for city council. It was said that Arena Cove stewards could have one of our board members on the selection committee for the RFP. And we would like to kind of hold to that and have a member of Arena Cove stewards be on that selection committee if possible.
Please provide me a name.
It would be me, William or Billy Arana.
Well, we'll take William or Billy Arana and have you a part of that review. Does that work?
Okay, that does.
Okay. Jennifer, you had your hand up. Do you still want to be heard?
Nope, Billy said it.
All right, awesome. Billy, can you take your hand down, please? Okay, so does that work for you, Richie?
Excellent.
All right, everybody have their assignments on this? Thank you, Scott. The committee will be the city manager, city planner, ad hoc member Wasserman and Billy Arana for the committee of four. And we look forward to your report. Scott, does that cover it for you on that one?
Sounds good to me. Thanks for your time.
Yeah, thank you, sir.
Clarification, the committee will recommend to the council and the council will vote on that.
Yes, on the RFP, correct?
Yes.
Yep, and that's how you understand it too, right, Billy?
Thank you.
Are you there? Well, he's
Yes, yes.
You understand your assignment.
I'm very clear with that. Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for that question, Jim. Good question.
Sure.
Report item, action item 10B, which we covered earlier as 8A. So we'll move on to 11A, the fiscal year 2022, 2023 final city budget. Paul?
Yes, so your proposed budget was presented at the June meeting. He said we'd bring back a budget that was a little tighter as far as the numbers from the 2122 fiscal year. That's what's included in here. There are really not very many changes from the prior budget other than to say that we did receive officially over $200,000 in TOT revenue once all the money came in from that last quarter. What, if the budget is fine, we need to pass a resolution adopting the budget and we need to pass a resolution adopting the GAN limit, which is an appropriations limits at state, to approve and finalize this.
Do you want the GAN limit first before the budget or as you presented, budget first, then the GAN limit?
The GAN limit should go first and then the budget.
Yes.
Agreed. All right, and just checking, okay. Before we go to the resolutions, is there any questions on behalf of council here? I'd like to commend you on an excellent budget and I'll keep commending you as soon as I hear from Vice Mayor Berkey.
Yeah, just one little question.
Go right ahead.
In the amended budget, do we have our contribution from Harbor Fest for the peer R and R?
Yes.
Can you show me where that is?
Wait, is that from last year though, right, or for this year?
No, 2223.
2223, right. Good question.
Well, I'm invested.
And just so you know, Paul, there's a button that got pushed on our monitor up here. That's all right. Just want to let you know before it times out. I think it's on the remote. Awesome. Thank you.
Because I thought it was under the PRF. But I don't see it. So, you know, we have not included that. I just realized that. It is not, it should be under 4990 miscellaneous sales and services.
What page would the ledger just add?
That would be
In our packet?
Yeah, P and L Enterprise under PRF.
What was the item number, 40?
4990, which is we put miscellaneous sales in service for our tickets sales. So that needs to be modified.
Were there miscellaneous sales and services?
Yeah, that should be about
So can we amend that?
Yes, absolutely.
So just to be clear, if there's no objections, we can still move forward with approval and that is a finding.
That's an oversight on both me and Joe's part.
But it'll be approval with that finding?
Yes.
All right. Good call.
Hey, that's what I'm here for.
Still a good report, Paul.
That's why they gave me the big bucks.
Maybe there's 10,000 there now, huh? While we're clarifying that, or is there any other comments from the council before I go to the public? Anyone from the hall have a question on what's being assessed? Anyone from the public using the raised hand feature to be heard?
A comment on some of these new color graphs, which I, very helpful and a great addition. Thank you.
I think it made it a lot easier to go through too. Yep.
Yeah.
I would entertain a motion to approve or deny the budget as presented with the finding that was illustrated by Vice Mayor Berkey.
Are we doing the GAN limit first?
You're absolutely right. I even asked you about that. Thank you. You're absolutely right. I even asked you about that. Thank you. I'll entertain a motion for resolution number 2022-29, resolution of the city council of the city of Point Arena establishing the annual appropriations limit, GAN limit, for the fiscal year of 202223 pursuant to Article 13B of the Constitution of the State of California.
So moved.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Berkey.
Second.
Thank you, Councilmember Wasserman. With a close third by Councilmember Dobbins. There's a motion and a second on the floor. If there's no question from the public, not seeing any, I would like a roll call vote from Gina Jeevis.
Yes, Mayor Ignacio.
That would be a yes.
Vice Mayor Berkey.
Yes.
Councilmember Dobbins.
Yes.
Councilmember Kugel.
Yes.
And Councilmember Wasserman.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you very much for that resolution. The next resolution in the packet assigned with the budget is resolution, I would, is there any discussion on the resolution before I call for a motion? Staff? Okay. I will call for a motion on Resolution 2022-30, resolution of the council of the city of Point Arena appropriating funds for the 20222023 fiscal year.
So moved.
Thank you, member. Thank you, Councilmember Wasserman.
Second.
And thank you, Vice Mayor Berkey. Is there any discussion on the motion? You sure? Okay. With that, Gina?
Yes, Mayor Ignacio.
Yes, Gina.
Vice Mayor Berkey.
Yes.
Councilmember Dobbins.
Yes.
Councilmember Kugel.
Yes.
And Councilmember Wasserman.
Yes.
Thank you and good job. So that brings us to item 12, city manager, city attorney report out of.
Ladies first.
Am I boring you? Good evening. Jenny?
Okay, I have, I have nothing current to report, but I would suggest that on our next city council meeting, we have a closed session because we have a proposed settlement agreement from Riverwatch that we should discuss.
Confirming you said Riverwatch?
I think, Paul, do I have that wrong?
Riverwatch and Jack Silver.
Oh, thanks. Thank you very much. All right, so noted. City manager, Paul Anderson.
Thank you. Few things to report. The piling project at the pier is done except for we need to hook some hooks to retain the pilings. But the pilings were driven in last week, maybe it was the week before. Over four days, it went really well. There were no major issues. It was pretty phenomenal watching some of the equipment work down there and how they did it. And it's done, more or less. We also had Moffett and Nickel who did our Jetty Rock study during the Cove project, came back to do an assessment of the pier itself, which was a requirement of State Lands Commission for our lease and also something we needed to do anyway because the pier is at its lifespan now. And so they will be generating, they were here earlier this week and they will generate a report by November, I believe, explaining what they found. And then we will present that to the State Lands Commission to fulfill that. We will also use that study to go to Department of Boating and Waterways and other funding agencies to present the issues that need to be remediated at the pier and seek funding from state and federal government to do those things. Yes?
Just a question, Paul. I haven't been down there for a few days. Have, have the piles been cut off?
Not yet.
That is.
That is on the agenda after we finish the hooking them in with the steel hooks.
Okay.
We, what else?
How's your foot?
I don't want to talk about it.
Okay.
So we did have coastal cleanup last Saturday. People came down to help clean up the Cove. There was a significant amount of trash that was taken out of Arena Creek behind the recycling center. I do want to bring that whole issue back to the next meeting to discuss more about that location. While I was there, I did break my fibula bone while removing a log from the creek. So I've learned not to work in the creek again.
But we had permission and blessing from.
Thank you to Fish and Wildlife. They gave us our permission to go into the creek and do some remediation work to clean it up. And I was able to do some of that for a while.
You're awesome.
Yeah. Other than that, I mean, there's plenty of other stuff, but I can't really think off the top of my head what is really important right now. So that's what I have.
Any questions for either Paul or the city attorney?
I like your new beard.
Keep going.
That's to stay out of the bathroom as much as possible because I have a broken ankle excuse.
Keep it.
All right.
So I do have a question.
Yes.
Sounding like a broken record, but what exactly did we make at Harbor Fest?
Yes, I'm sorry. We net, we brought in, we grossed $34,000 off of that event and we expended about 9,000 of that on food, security, porta potties, supplies and such like that. So we wound up with about $24,000 to $25,000, I'm sorry, $25,000 to $26,000 in profit for the Point Arena Pier Repair and Rehabilitation Fund, which has not had any money in it for the last two years because we've been unable to hold Harbor Fest. So the general fund has been funding that. So now we're back to where we're a little bit more level with our work at the pier fixing it and maintaining it.
Thank you, Paul.
Good question. Richie, you want to give me the motion? All right. Item 13, future agenda items. In the next 45 days, we know that our next meeting is scheduled for October 25th. Confirming, I thought you said 23rd earlier. It is 25th. All right, October 25th. Live meeting as long as we're successful with this one. We will be talking, as city manager mentioned, in the next 45 days about the recycling center update and a coastal development permit for the downtown park. With that, I want to thank everybody that participated tonight, online and in person, and I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Just one further.
Just one more thing.
Go ahead.
I'd like to compliment all those, and I think there are some names that should be mentioned, for putting together this hybrid meeting system with the speakers, the new screen and, and the further participation of the public, which is really the whole purpose of it.
Well, those names shouldn't go unsaid. That would be Paul Anderson, Gina Jeevis, and Eric Dahlhoff.
And Mayor Ignacio.
Mine's still a work in development, but thank you. With that, is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll move to adjourn.
All right, we're adjourned. No second needed. We're adjourned. And the time for the stamp is 8:39 PM. Good job, folks.
Thank you, Mayor Ignacio.